Good afternoon and welcome to the December, uh, December, April 7th, 2025 Spalding County Board of Commissioners Workshop. The time is 3:00 PM. I would request that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd ask Commissioner Reginald Watts to offer the invocation and if he'll continue to stand while Commissioner Bolden leads us in the pledge of the flag.
That is great. In the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you, God. Lord, we thank you for who you are. And Lord, right now, we're just asking for your presence, God, for you to guide and lead us through this meeting, God. So, Lord, we ask you to bless this community, and it is in Jesus' name your people have prayed. Amen, amen, and amen.
If would please you, may pledge ladies to our flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner Bolden. We'll now move on to the agenda items. First, we have FY26 Fire Department Budget Presentation. I assume that Chief Byrd is coming forward to lead us in that.
What do you, I need to know what y'all have before you all. I'll make sure we're on the same page. Do y'all have any, just ever?
All right, let's see here now. Fire.
Yeah, you get, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, overall. Okay.
Thank you.
How you doing, chief?
Very good.
Oh, right, appreciate it.
If you would direct your attention to the handout I gave you. This is the one that's going to affect, have one of the biggest effects, which is to our, our increase in our personnel. And we had looked at doing an increase to our total staffing with the, would like to request moving to where we could go to three people on a fire truck, which would be additional 21 people. However, we would like to proceed on that with a two-year implementation plan. Let's do 11 in 20, 25, 26, and then follow back up with 10 in 26, 27. That would allow us time one to do the hiring because it may take us at least a couple of cycles to get through, to get enough people to, to do that. One thing we are very happy with, our current situation is we are fully staffed, and our current recruit school is really going outside the norm. We have, we've lost three people out of the recruit school, which normally we've lost a great deal by now. They all are performing very high. They have a high grade point averages. They're doing well skills-wise. So, we're very optimistic. And as I told you very recently, we went a whole 12-month period without losing a single firefighter to another department. And we're already on progress now to stay that same way. So, we're, we're looking up as far as keeping our people, and we appreciate y'all's help with that because that was enormous to make it that way. But this would take us to that next step to where we could move beyond having two people on a fire truck and move it up to three people on a fire truck.
Okay, I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it kind of bothers me when we say, when you say we're fully staffed and there's only two people at the fire station. I just can't imagine the city the size of us, ours, or the county, a county the size of ours, where we're actually saying you're fully staffed with two people. I think that number is not a good number. I mean, I, I don't know how, the process of how you figure that out, if it's based on population, if it's based on number of calls. But, but when one person don't come to work and the fire station is closed, we're not fully staffed. We're, so, so I think this number is wrong, first of all.
And it really, to say we're fully staffed is also misleading because with 14 people in recruit school, that means we're 14 people short on shift. And it takes six months to train them and another three to four months to do rotations before they can even ride as a second person on a fire truck. So, even though on paper, we have all of our full-time employees budgeted for, counted, they're there, but they're not even functional for about nine months. To answer your question about how it was come up with how many people operating on a fire truck, you know, there are national standards. One, the NFPA standard, which is National Fire Protection Association, says you should put X amount of people on a, on a structured fire within X amount of time. Well, that sounds good if you can afford it. We do need to move forward because I believe we're operating off a staffing model. That was what we could afford at one time when I called by and allowed for it. But we're not getting any slower. We're getting busier. The types of calls that are coming in are getting, are getting more and more labor-intensive. And so, we do need for safety for our own personnel to put that third person on a truck. So, when I say fully staffed, fully staffed based on what we were allotted, what we need. We really need four people on the engine, but we're, we're nowhere near being able to afford that yet. But three people would get us a long way because when we roll up on a structured fire, and you know, we send three engines to one house fire. We only have four, we realize, we only have seven in the county. So, we, we deplete three out of, out of seven on a single structured fire that is still, do the math, two, four, six people on a fire where you go to even north of us to a Henry County or Fayette County, they're putting 12 and 14 on a scene. You go to Atlanta, they're putting 24 on in five minutes or less, and everybody works. And that's to the point that, you know, our people work very hard. You know, rehab, it means you're in the, in the, in the yard. They're getting water poured in their mouth with a fresh bottle pill on their back, and they try to go right back in. And Chief Polk and myself, we carry turnout gear and air packs, and we both have been actively engaged fighting fire just to keep another engine in service in our time for the last five years. So, when we bring three up, that would definitely help with the workload on any structured fire. And it would prevent us also from having shortages to where we have to look at stations being able to be open because we don't have enough people on shift. I feel like we've done a lot, and I say we because I feel like we're a team here in the retention part of that. So, I'm hoping that that won't be a problem. So, as we move forward with what we have, we'll keep more people. So, that shortage won't be there as much. But if we could get to the point where we could truly put three people on a shift, I mean, on per truck, it will definitely make us more effective and keep our people safer while operating in a very dangerous environment.
Ms. Quinn, I agree with you wholeheartedly. There is an opportunity for us to change that language so that we are indicating that we are, we are budgeted. We have an allocation of budgeted personnel of two per truck per shift, and that desperately needs to be increased. And that's one of the requests that we have moving forward for this year's budget.
So, I, I, I hear that, but just the fact that we are okay with saying that two people can run a firehouse is, it, to, to me is ludicrous. So, so let's, let's talk about the money. So, I know that the fire fund is different than the general fund. So, were you in 25, so, so we have fire, seven fire stations?
We have seven fire stations, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so, so off the top, you need seven people. If you, if you change what is a status quo from two people per station to three people per station, that means automatically you need seven people.
Per shift, and we have three shifts, so you're looking at 21 additional people.
Twenty-one people.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what does y'all money look like?
Well, as of right now, I'm going to defer to Dr. Ledbetter to assist with this side. We are to a point that I believe we could absorb it, but I would prefer that the money people in the room help with this conversation. You tend to lose jobs when you say we can do it, then you can't do it. So, I'd really like some.
That is very true, and that, that is definitely not the intent. So, taking a look at what the request is for fiscal year '26 from the Fire Department, it's 25.36% less than what it was the previous year because we've got new trucks that have come in. We still have trucks waiting to be delivered, so they will be delivered over the next two years. But the ones that have come in that we purchased have afforded us the opportunity to see a reduction in the request from last year to this year. Does that reduction equal what will be required? No, ma'am. There will be a requirement for a very slight increase in our fire district tax to offset the additional personnel requested. Right now, we're looking at a very, very minimal amount of increase for the fire district tax to increase the number of people.
So, I, I don't, I don't want anybody's taxes to go up. I definitely don't, don't want mine or anybody else's taxes to go up. But we're talking about community safety, and the fire, I know we said a minimal, but it really bothers me that we're, we're not equipped. You know, we're building another fire station two years down the road, but right now, on any given day, if, if, if three or four firemen had the flu, all of our stuff is going to be shut down if only one person's there. So, I, I, you know, I don't know what their fund balance is. I know that they have bills on fire trucks that we haven't had delivered. I don't know if we paid on them. But I also know that part of what I think will happen with debt reduction is that it will cover some of these vehicles that, that is out of their budget.
Yes, ma'am.
I challenge us to do what we need to do. And, you know, with, right now, you don't need the personnel, the, the three people or whatever it is, or seven people, you're going to need for fire station eight. But we certainly need to, to do what we need to do at the regular fire station. And, and, and the reason I say that is because a friend of mine called and said that they had called, first of all, for somebody to come help do a lift, and they were told that, that we couldn't do that. But they, they said they were told that if they were able to come, it would be about 40 minutes. That was to, from well to well start. So, we're, we're picking this stuff up, but we're leaving the community unsafe. That, that is, if you have, you call an ambulance and it's an hour before somebody gets to you, you're dead. If you have a stroke or a heart attack, minutes mean brain and minutes mean oxygen. So, I have some real concerns that we're okay with not having enough people at our fire stations. It, it, it just super bothers me. So, like I said, I, I, I know this is a fire fund. I hate for y'all's fund balance to be looking raggedy, but I think we need to make some hard decisions. We need to either maybe go back and look at what would be a realistic increase to the, the fire, fire.
Fire district tax?
Fire district tax. I know that we, at one point, we said 1.25 or something, and, and which is like that, but now we're like at this. So, and I, you know, I know several commissioners are, you know, don't want to do that, but I think people want to know that when they call the Fire Department or they call for EMS, that somebody is going to show up. Not that it's going to be a, a while because this station is closed because somebody's got the flu or somebody's kid is sick. I'm not trying to hear that if I call y'all. So, so I'm just asking y'all to think about that. I mean, this money is not from the general fund. It is from the fire fund. I'd like to think that the upcoming SPOS is going to be announced, which is basically going to be transportation will, will be successful, and we will be able to back some of this back up. But, I mean, I think we just need to make a hard decision.
Can I add one thing to that? When you look at, it's not just two people on the fire truck. I want you to remember that we're spread out, pretty, pretty spread out. And so, you look at engine five, if they have a call at Hall and Bill Road, there's two of them out there on a structured fire for 12 to 15 minutes alone. And you'd be shocked at one, one additional person would do in that crisis. And this, this, this happens this morning. We had some significant calls out that way, and they were by themselves, just two of them. So, that at least gives us that third person, and, and it doesn't sound like a lot until you actually get engaged in operations. That third person makes a very big difference on safety and effectiveness. So, we have stations. That's just five as an example that they could be alone, just two of them, for extended period of time, especially if the next new engine, the, the next closest station is already tied up on a call. And I, I, I'm proud to say our people do it every single day. They don't complain about doing it, and they're proud to say they do it. They work hard.
They do work hard. I would also make an invitation to our Board of Commissioners on any given Friday to call either Chief Polk or, or Chief Byrd and ask for an opportunity to go over to our burn building and take a look at what our new recruits are doing and the training that our regular folks are going through. If you've not been over and watched them do an exercise, just a 15 or a 20-minute exercise into the, the burn building and understand what these firefighters go through, please take just half an hour, 45 minutes out of your day and go over and, and watch them as they work through the challenges of the burn building. I can tell you, and, and having been over there for the last couple of Fridays to watch our new recruits go through, these men and women are absolute rock star hero athletes. And I don't, I, I, I know it's hard to understand, but I'd like to get Chief Byrd to share with you what an NFL, a former NFL player shared with him just over the course of the last two weeks.
We actually have a, he's a local celebrity, and he played for, I believe, the Chicago Bears for several years. And his very first time he went in, and the first time we do it, to them, is really a lot. But we're just kind of, you know, stair stepping the heat up in a little bit conditions. When we got out, we were looking at him, and he was kind of sitting on a cooler, just rocking. And I'm thinking, oh my gosh, is, is he okay? And I didn't know, even though he was a football player. So, he gets up, walks around for a few minutes, he come back, sit down, and he says, are, are you okay? He said, I mean, y'all are Pro Bowls, NFL, and I'm not going to use this as the exact language, but NFL ain't got crap on y'all. He said, I, I, I never knew. And, and I had to make him understand. I said, well, you stretch, you prepare, you, you're wearing a, a helmet with a mask. Said, try doing it.
Breathe it through this.
Carrying an extra 80 pounds on your body, insulated, that's encapsulated, that's holding body heat in, dragging a hose line that one gallon of water weighs 8.33 pounds, and we're carrying a hose line that can flow 120 gallons a minute. That's a lot of work. And with two people, they, and they, and it's, it, it's not so bad when it's a straight shot. There's no houses with straight shots. And some of them like stairs. The stairs are tough. So, you got to manage what's called pinch points. You got to get them upstairs. You got to get them around where you're dragging on his body weight. You're dealing with heat, and the heat attacks your muscles. It just wears you out. And so, when they get to the top, you know, they, they have to be able to do it. And he was, he was struggling, and he's in good shape, very good shape. So, yeah, I, I, I tell if anybody wants to go in, I'll be happy. I'm, I'm typically over there every Friday burning with them. I, I, I monitor the pallet load and everything to make sure we're doing it safely. So, I'll be happy if anybody would like to go in. I'll take you in, but I can definitely explain to you and show you what we, what we endure. But even just keeping it mild, they're crawling at 400 degrees at their level, at the floor level.
And he's one of our employees.
He's, that football player is one of our employees.
So, thank you for the invite. I can't even hardly stand my own hot flesh. I'm, you don't have to worry about me.
You can sit in the shade and watch too. We'll make sure. We got a fan. We'll put it on.
Ms. Quinn, I absolutely hear what you're saying. I, I, I want to have us have a little talk among ourselves as we're walking and thinking about, before we approve the budget. Let's do a little thinking about that whole issue and how, what the impact would be. Can he pick up that many people and train that many people in the amount of time he's got and everything? So, yes, we thought we had a good plan, but you're exactly right. If you've been watching when they come on scene, I had the opportunity to do that out of Sun City and watch the first truck roll up and try to start, and the second truck roll up and everything else. It's, it's tense. It's tense. There's not a lot of extra slack in the system to be able to do that. So, I hear you. We'll, we'll have an opportunity among ourselves to talk and think through that. Good, great point.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt your whole thing.
No, I'm, I, if you ask me to brag on our people, we'll be here all day. So, I appreciate you recognizing that. The next part we are asking for, if you, if you go back one more slide, I'm sorry. With the workload and additional people, we're going to need some help in administration. Right now, it's Chief Polk and I. Then it goes down to battalion. There is no, there is no layers between us. So, do everything from personnel to brains and fire trucks to get repaired, to monitoring staffing, to actually being incident commander today during the, during the storm we had. We needed another layer, especially as we start to grow with this. It, it needs another layer of supervision that will help, help monitor and manage this stuff. And also will allow us, we're, we're really wanting to progress. We have a vision of where we want to go, and that extra layer will allow us to even take our department to the next level because it would allow Chief Polk and myself to stop staying so tied up in operations and actually step up a little more. And you'll see that salary as a base salary plus what benefits would be. Okay. Then startup cost, if we do this, this is how much it would cost, and this is a total package deal. If we do all 21, that's going, that's what it takes to outfit a firefighter. The, the medical equipment at the bottom is not, that is, if we would like to bring up the ALS truck, right now, we have one person running, running peak time staff. We'd like to bring it up more on a 24-hour basis, and we're seeing a lot of good, good effect out of that one ALS person. We'd like to have one on every shift, working a 24-hour shift. That's the startup equipment. It's 58,000 to get that extra truck up and running. And what ALS means is advanced, and Ms. Quinn knows this, but advanced cardiac life support capabilities. So, when they're running a, a stroke or a cardiac arrest call, when an ambulance may have a 12-minute ETA, and we commit somebody on the scene five minutes or less, and we, we have an opportunity to administer first-line cardiac-related drugs, defibrillate, and do a lot of advanced care, advanced airway management. That really greatly increases the survival of survivability. And we actually, you've seen a success story in, in this very chamber where somebody, we save somebody, and they, they all, they, y'all were here when we got the bin award on them. So, we're looking to increase those as well. Not adding a person, but reclassifying one of our existing positions into a firefight paramedic position, one for each shift. And I'll stop there in case there's any questions, comments, or concerns.
Remember, we, you as a board had agreed for this upgrade last year during our budget process. Should we have, should we had increased the fire district tax last year, that's what was in the system last year. Since the increase was not approved last year, then this is back before you again for consideration during the budget.
So, at the end of the day, for me, is how much money they got in their fund balance?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, because, because we're not talking about our general fund. We're, we're talking about the fire fund.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and I, and I, I understand. So, do you not have a deputy fire chief now? So, my other question is, you know, the sheriff's department, once the sheriff's department provide post-certified training and whatever else for an individual, they have a requirement that you have to contract with them to work. Is, do you guys do that?
We do not have a contract currently. We have researched and found out. They, their world and our worlds are very different because they actually have to, to, I'm, I'm looking for the right word here. They go to a post academy, and the sheriff's office has to support that, and there is a penalty if, I believe, they leave early, and I'm, and I'm talking out of turn here. So, they sign that contract because they will actually be out of money. If I'm, I'm speaking right, I believe better about post. Whereas us, we do all on internal, internal training. It is a soft cost because we already have a training officer in place. We already have all the materials. So, we do that. There is expenses, but it's already factored in our budget. So, that is a little harder to enforce. Also, the, the enforceability of a contract sometimes can be difficult. We, but we have explored that. We want to keep them two to three years after we've trained them. But from what I hear, even overhead, it can be not worth the money to try to go back and collect.
Those numbers that are on that sheet, is that for, for bringing 21 people on?
The turnout gear, physicals, and uniforms, that's for the 21 additional people.
That's for 21 different people.
Yes. So, if we're going to break it up over two years, we would cut those in half each year for the, for the capital outlay to outfit, outfit that many people.
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying, but just, just, so like, if, if I was a firefighter and I had to have turnout gear, could anybody else use my turnout gear?
No, ma'am. You were required, that we're required by the state. Everybody has their own set of turnout gear, and we even go above and beyond. And this is one of the things that makes us so attractive as a department. We provide them two sets of gear, and that is because of the cancer provision, preventative initiative, where they, they have a chance to put on clean gear. And plus, to be very honest with you, when you, like this morning, they got soaking wet, then you get a house fire. You're very prone to steam injuries from wet turnout gear. So, this, in cold days, allows them to swap into a second gear. So, everybody in our department actually has two sets of gear to allow them for that change. But we can't trade gear off, so they can't share it, especially because it's custom fit. And realizing turnout gear is not just the fabrics. You have to have air pockets that provide you radiant heat protection. And if you, you don't just put the wrong size on somebody because they could get burned. So, that is, everybody's individually, it's plus, believe me. When I wear my turnout gear, you don't want to come after me and wear it. It doesn't smell very good. So, no, we have, everybody has to have their own set. And that's helmet, coat, pants, a hood, gloves, and boots. And plus, they're on, it's, they're self-take breathing masks, so they don't share masks.
So, so, so I, I look at that list, and that, you know, if we're talking about two sets of turnout gear. So, so, so I, I look at that list, and that, you know, if we're talking about, um, two sets of turnout gear, basically twenty-one people, we're still, we're, we're talking about eight thousand bucks per person is what I, what I added up on my fingers. So, yes, on the one side, I understand that, that is, you say that it's not really worth recouping, or you have a difficult time recouping. But I think what it costs the sheriff's department is much less than that to get someone trained.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, when somebody leaves, we're able to clean their gear and reissue it, and we send it to have it professionally cleaned. They just can't share with their actively on duty. So it's not like when they leave, that gear's taken away. We do store it, put it in inventory, and as we get into, half of the ones, over three-fourths of the ones that are in, we're training right now are wearing gear that we had reclaimed and reissued. So if I entered that wrong, I apologize.
They have to have their own, um, their own partic- particle mask. They have to have all of that specifically set for them.
Yes, ma'am. Well, it has to be fit tested to them. And they have to have their own mask, that way somebody from following, don't come on and put on the same mask, because that does cause some cross contamination and spread of disease.
All right, I don't have any more questions on that page.
Okay, next slide. Speaking of fire trucks, so I thought we would go ahead and bring up, um, part of the reason we got where we were, there was no replacement plan. The good news is, if you look out, you know, they're, they're several years out. What we're finding, and this could be adjusted based on how long it takes to supply a fire truck or build one. Uh, fire trucks used to last about fifteen years for an engine and about twenty years for a ladder truck, and ladder trucks are the ones that can reach up high. We're seeing now with, you know, things aren't made the way they used to be, they're lasting about thirteen years, and there's a three-month, three-year delivery time. That when they get ten years old, we need to look at going ahead and ordering new trucks so we can get them in, in the year. So based on what we have coming and what we have, if you look at that, and I tried to keep it simple and just put what station we're at, where you would know when we're gonna have to look at replacing in the future. Good news is, and looking at most of those, uh, whoever follows me will be, you know, having to deal with this. So we're, we'll be in good shape for a little while.
Thank you for the planning. Thank you for the planning.
My pleasure.
Okay.
So that's it on the, the big ones, then.
Your overall budget decreased by twenty-five percent, but that's because we don't have some of the fire trucks on.
Ma- our maintenance are gonna go down. Now that we have, especially trucks under warranties, the maintenance costs are gonna significantly go down because we're spending quite a bit of money to keep, keep the, the fleet up and running. And it's, we realize we have three new engines in place right now. We have three more coming by the end of this year to include the ladder truck that, that, you know, perished unexpectedly. And then we have another one coming next year, so that's really gonna get us up to the point by this time next year, we're gonna be even in much better shape with vehicle maintenance because they, we'll keep an old, couple older trucks for reserves, because even though if they're new, they're like anything else, they are built by people, there's times they may need repairs. But they won't be so old and so, so run down. So we will see a lot of decrease in that, that, that category alone.
Any other questions for Chief Bird? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All right, uh, uh, next we'll, uh, move to the EMA budget. Chief Polk.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody.
Afternoon.
Um, once again, we were very blessed this morning while we did, um, receive some damage. Um, the National Weather Service will be out tomorrow surveying, but uh, they did, uh, share with us that they're pretty sure it was a confirmed tornado. Um, uh, was updated by our damage assessment team just before getting here, and we found, uh, eleven homes that were damaged. And we had about twenty calls for service, for tree and power lines down, which pretty much all of those been addressed at this time. So, um, so what we wanted to share before we got to our budget is to, you know, this, what, just same thing with Chief Bird was talking about, how, um, these folks work so, so generally hard, is, uh, these same people are the ones that we asked to help us do extra duties for emergency management. Um, while not everybody does that, we do have a, a group that has, uh, agreed to do that and wanted to come on board to assist us with the different uh, de- details and activities we do to provide emergency management for our community. And, uh, so, um, you know, just since, uh, seventy-seven, we've had sixteen disaster declarations, um, which mean, you know, federal, um, efforts such as the tornadoes in twenty-twenty-three. Um, I've been, uh, uh, been with several of them since ninety-two. Um, there were some right before my time, but, uh, so, you know, we're definitely not immune. Um, you know, I was talking to, uh, Mr. Larry about, it was, uh, this last one before yesterday was the, uh, anomaly that, you know, we've been so blessed by not having things, we're definitely not an anomaly. We, we're definitely, uh, like a target most days. Um, so we stay pretty busy. Okay. So, um, just, um, just share with you for our, at Emergency Operations Center, you know, we've come a long ways. Uh, we have a group of partners and team that have agreed to serve in that role, and these folks come together just like this moment, this morning on a moment's notice, um, to activate this. And, uh, just since, um, this year, we've already had, this morning was our seventh activation since January. And that's snow, snowstorms, um, then the severe weather potential events. And so, uh, that is very engaging, a lot of training, a lot of practice we do on a monthly basis to make sure we're all as sharp as we can be, make sure our plans are up to date. Um, and then for the emergency management calls for service, that's our law, search and rescue, or any other activation that we may be requested from. And so that's our, our average is four to six, um, over the past few years. So, um, these folks do a lot, not, you know, already firefighters, and, but we also do a lot just to make this happen for our community, um, to make sure we're as prepared as possible, and then we respond and take care of people should they be affected. Okay. Um, exercises are a big component of what we do to try to make sure we stay as sharp as possible, and we're very proud. We're, we're only required to have three, uh, from Georgia Emergency Management. Um, you can tell eleven before COVID, um, and we've progressively gotten back, and we've already, uh, right at, actually nine is short. Uh, we, I turned in two last week because we've been working on our coop tabletops. So we actually have eleven for this year, and the state fiscal year is different than our fiscal year, that's why it looks, looks weird. But, um, so we're very engaging with all our partners, trying, trying to make sure, we do a five-year, uh, training and exercise plan. So we actually ask our partners, do they have anything they'd like to train and practice on? And so they offer the same things, um, to us that we can actually go to their departments or organizations and help them, um, practice with plans, and then we can update plans and make sure it's the, the best possible to, to, to meet the needs. Okay, Chris. Um, and then, like I said, the training is a big component. Um, we're actually hosting a hazard material awareness class from GMA today. Um, and once again, you've seen, uh, before, before COVID was ten classes. Well, right now, we're already up to hosting fourteen classes this year that, uh, that will engage partners from all across our community, um, to, to make sure we have the training in place, to make sure we're as capable and have the most up-to-date training as possible. So lots of planning and coordinating with that. Okay, Chris. Same thing with our safety and preparedness programs. Um, you know, our community emergency response, you know, we just finished our twenty-one, twenty-first program, was very, very proud of. Um, but we also do a family safety day, a sun safety, Sun City Safety Day. We, uh, we're always engaged in the community, we start to bleed, uh, the praise and preparedness with our local houses of worship. Uh, we do the annual beat, beat the heat, and then we've been actively doing cooling centers and warming centers. So this year alone, we already had seventeen, um, programs that we've assisted with in the community. So a lot, lots again, a lot, a lot of folks coming together to make that happen, coordinating and scheduling. Once again, uh, we've, we've, uh, met exceeded, uh, our disaster match requirements from GMA. Um, those are the criteria to go ahead and be able to, be able to, uh, get that two and a half percent extra. And if you remember, uh, we were able to get that with the tornadoes of two thousand twenty-three, we had added about two hundred thirteen thousand dollars extra to our re- reimbursement that we wouldn't have normally gotten. A lot of communities don't have this component. So this is actually one of my, uh, goals. Uh, I'm the area, uh, chair for our, uh, Area Four for GMA, and I'm gonna work with our twenty-five counties to see, make sure they have the capabilities of getting this for their community if they choose to. Because this is a difference maker, it really is. So very proud of that as well. And this is some of our future work plans, just, um, you know, we, we don't have this, uh, this is all just included in what we're already doing budget-wise. Um, exercises we already got planned, I told you, we got five years planned out. Uh, we're definitely working on a continuity plan with all of our departments and partners, and we've been doing tabletops. Um, we did, uh, two, two departments this past week, and I've already got one scheduled for next week. Um, and then we're gonna go into another annex of that, uh, trying to make sure everybody's prepared as possible. Um, we're always working on planned updates, but some in particular, uh, we're waiting, we're to get it started on our five-year hazard mitigation, uh, plan update. Um, we're waiting on getting that, uh, activated right now, along with our ongoing emergency operations plan. Um, and then we go, we're planning another CERT program for the fall. Um, and then everything else going on with the monthly meetings, uh, merchant operations support. And we, we partner with our utility companies, um, and our local time and champs in traffic incident management partners. Uh, we're looking, we're working hard now to, uh, get a local emergency planning committee together, meeting with all of our local businesses and industry. And then, um, part of that, we want to go ahead and, uh, have a safety, uh, program with them. Looking at maybe calling it Preparedness Spalding, it's gonna be a component of what we offer with CERT, um, just on a, uh, industry basis. So we're looking forward to that, along with the Healthcare Coalition, which is, as is a backbone of our community. Um, I'm on the committee for that as well, for our local healthcare coalition that kinda coincides with all of our, uh, healthcare, whether it's dialysis, assisted living, nursing homes, hospital, of course, um, anything to do with medical in our community, we offer emergency management for su- support for them as well. So we're trying to get that bigger and better.
Glenn, I don't know if we have, um, received or not, maybe you can update us on the grant application for hazard mitigation plan. Have we received the notification that we're gonna receive that grant again?
I did, I did share with her last week, and we did receive it, and she's just waiting on the, uh, approval on, from GMA to, uh, and she'll notify us when we go in and start.
And that will serve to pay for their hazard mitigation plan that's scheduled for twenty-twenty-seven?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So you're already a year and a half ahead?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well done, well done. You're knocking it, knocking it out of the park. You continue to knock it out of the park.
We got great partners. And then just a bragging point, um, some grant acquisitions that we, we've worked on to, uh, to bolster our Emergency Operations Center is, uh, we're very patient for eight years, but we finally got approved for the generator for our Emergency Operations Center, um, which y'all have been great supports to make sure we have that component as a backup, but we're gonna have our own. Um, it's gonna, it takes about six months evidently to do that, so we're looking around Julyish, but, uh, we should have that in place by then, um, and we're very proud of that. And then we also, uh, were able to get our Starlink backup communications paid for with, with our annual grant as, this year as well. So it cost the county nothing for those, except for our match.
And Starlink provides the internet access should we lose, uh, internet capability? Or should we lose power, uh, that provides the internet coming into the building? Then the generator plus the Starlink would s- satisfy the requirements for communication?
That's exactly right, and, and we have a mobile, uh, component as well. So our budget, um, actually shows a decrease, um, in actual request. Um, we, uh, we, we just try to, you know, make sure we were zero-based, and, uh, it actually come in as a decrease because of the extra funds that we were able to get through grants and, uh, the capabilities. Um, next year, and on- once again, we'll evaluate and see if there's any other applications that may help us with our efforts. Um, which we have a couple of, um, you know, we still are doing, um, damage assessments, uh, with pencil and paper. Um, we are looking at other avenues with that, with, uh, with, uh, Chris Reagan and our GS component. Um, see if that's an app- application we can use. Um, but also some notification and weather, uh, monitoring components, we're just evaluating those to see if that would benefit us. Um, but right now, we're, we're, we're just status quo.
We like part of that, and your status is pretty good.
I want the money part.
Go back one, one slide for me, Chris. Uh, it, Chief Polk, it appears that from fiscal year twenty-five budget to the fiscal year twenty-six recommended, uh, you're about a, you're, you're requesting about a two thousand dollar, two thousand two hundred dollar increase, is that correct? It goes from eighty-seven, four sixty-one to eighty-nine, six fifteen?
Hmm, okay.
Yes, I apologize for that.
No worries, no worries.
We're just trying to check and make sure we understand.
That is part of the Starlink subscriptions.
So it's a two thousand dollar increase for his budget?
Any other questions from the board?
No, it says no increase at the top of it.
I, I, I do see that, yes, ma'am. But just looking at the bottom and looking at the, the dollar figures, it, it does appear to be a twenty-two hundred dollar increase.
And that, that's exactly what the subscription for Starlink is, I apologize. Thank you.
No sweat. Uh, all right, thanks, Chief. That's all, all we've got for you. Uh, now, so everybody understands, uh, both Chief Polk and Chief Bird, uh, weren't able to make the timing of when we were doing our budget, uh, last week. So these are just typical of what we saw last week, Monday to Thursday, when we went through, uh, the budget cycle, uh, with each, uh, director. Uh, all right. Uh, at this time, I'd like to discuss the request from the Sheriff's Department to surplus forty-six vehicles rooftop light bars?
Uh, I believe the sheriff's in route, uh, but I don't think he's walked in the door yet. Uh, if you would like to postpone this one until the sheriff walks in?
Okay. Uh, request, uh, next one is to review and discuss the FY twenty-six Spalding County CSBG Resolution Strategic Plan and Assessment. The wonderful Ms. Brantley is here to present and answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am here again. Um, I provided you all with a packet for the FY twenty-six budget. Speaking, I'm sorry. I don't like microphones. Um, so this is for the FY twenty-six, um, CSBG budget. I sent you an explanation that the funding actually for FY twenty-six has been reduced. And this is because of, uh, federal budget cuts. Uh, we were called into an emergency meeting online, uh, probably about two weeks ago. So it appears that the state had, um, some, well, when they go into the fiscal year, which begins in October, they thought they had a budget of about roughly eighteen million. They found out they will only have ten million, uh, of those dollars, which leaves them a deficit. Uh, so the budget for the county was reduced because of that. Uh, also, uh, the state did go and have, um, of, it's their formula for allocating funds to all of the agencies, uh, in Georgia, which includes the three counties. So, uh, there's a reduction there. I'm not certain exactly how much that reduction is. But overall, last year, uh, Spalding County received the hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, and this year, that amount was reduced by about eighty thousand dollars or forty-three percent. That creates a significant budget reduction in the program. Uh, the way we have provided the grant administrative services is that CSBG functions within itself. So, uh, whatever budget amount was allocated from the state to CSBG, I tried to make sure the providers operated within those dollars, and they, we, we didn't have to come back and ask Spalding County for any funding. Uh, so because of that, the, the budgets for the providers were cut drastically. Uh, I'll draw your attention to the actual budget that I provided in there. So with the Salvation Army, what we usually do is fund the after-school tutorial program. And then I would actually fund the summer camp program with some funding, knowing that we were going to receive carryover dollars from the previous year. Uh, but with the budget cuts, uh, we couldn't even, uh, budget the, the summer program. Now DHS may receive some additional funding by the beginning of the year. They just didn't know, uh, so we worked with the dollars that they allotted for Spalding County. Uh, with the, excuse me, the nutrition program, we usually fund, and sometimes it was some extra dollars in that senior nutrition program. We were serving about, we budgeted about twenty-five to, for twenty-five to thirty individuals. We reduced that number to about fifteen or six, it's sixteen that they're actually, uh, have on their, uh, roles at this time. So we're gonna, we budgeted for those sixteen. Uh, tried to keep the youth backpack program in there, uh, just in case we get some additional funding. Just kind of that format or that footprint that we've usually funded, tried to keep that in place to some respects. So if we get some additional funding, we'll just go back in and increase these budget amounts. Uh, there's the EasyTrack software, so we have to pay for that. Um, that's the software where we do the eligibility determination. Uh, it pretty much kind of runs the program, and they are relying on EasyTrack for a lot of, um, the services that CSBG, that we provide through CSBG. Uh, there's a SmartQuest data management. Now that contract is actually a little bit more than this. But if we cannot afford that contract with Smart Quest starting in October. I budgeted some funds so we could pay for someone to come in and provide some assistance in case we need it for grant administration. So we have some dollars there.
Oh, let me, let me ask you a question, Jeanie. When you're saying grant administration, we have a grant administrator. So is this just for, for Three Rivers or could anybody be the administrator for that? Because I would hate to think that you're gonna hire somebody else when we already have somebody who is capable of doing grant administration.
Provides the services like for Easy Track, the support for the providers and things for the Easy Track program. To help with the maintenance on the Easy Track. It's just another kind of support for the program.
Okay, but what, do we have somebody this year to help us do that? I'm just trying to understand why we, so we hired somebody this year to help with the?
Yeah, they, they've just kind of been in place to provide some support when we needed that for the providers, as well as for Three Rivers. So it's just a support for the Easy Track program.
And that comes out of the CSBG money?
All of that comes out of CSBG.
So, but is that paid for with y'all's fifteen percent? Or do we pay for it out of the grant?
You pay for it out of the grant.
Yeah, I don't like that. I don't like that because I feel like the fifteen percent that we paying y'all should administer the grant. I'm, I'm just trying, I mean, you know, it, you talk about cutting out money, I'm just trying to make sure I look at your stuff the same way I look at everybody else's stuff. So, yeah, I, and I don't know what that is, but clearly a salary is gonna be in, in the thousands of dollars.
For the
For, for this person to help.
It's, it's just a fee, I'm sure they have that, but it's, it's, it's a fee for their services, so.
But, but what have we been paying them in the past? Do you know that?
The actual contract is like, or the actual amount is like ten thousand. But it comes out of CSBG. It's all covered with CSBG.
But you understand what I'm saying, right?
I do understand.
I, I just wanna make sure we, we giving y'all fifteen percent and now we gotta pay ten thousand dollars for somebody else to come help us figure out how to do Easy Track?
Well, okay. I understand your point. And the grant administrative fees are fifteen percent of the allocation amount. So for FY twenty six, it would be fifteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. What I'm asking for today is for the Board of Commissioners to approve the resolution to submit the proposal to DHS, as well as approve the strategic plan. And community assessment that was also provided to you in the packet. The only thing that has to be signed is actually the resolution that would come back to us. I will also, I'll also add that, so Three Rivers, I know that I've been working there technically forty years. As of April the first, I started as a technician. So I officially started working with the program I think in nineteen ninety one. A lot of things have changed with CSBG, a lot of the requirements, a lot of things are, they're asking a whole lot of us at this point. One of the things that they implemented was organizational standards. And the organizational standards were there to ensure that all agencies have the appropriate organizational capacity. And both critical financial and administrative services, as well as a unique, in all areas of unique importance for the Community Action Network. We have to do an assessment for Spalding County each year to say that those things are in place. So for twenty twenty four, Spalding County received a plaque because you received a one hundred percent for the organizational standards for the CSBG program.
Yeah, we'll do a picture, come on. Step forward in the middle of the room and we'll take a picture of even though it's eighty thousand dollars or so less, we're still
She, they're gonna have to send it back to us because Clay has done it. I couldn't open it up.
Alright, Steve, what's the, what's the bottom line impact of this eighty thousand dollar decrement? We're not blaming that on Jeanie. We know what she's doing, the right things. How, how do you see this impact?
Well, I, I actually think I'm gonna turn it back around on, on Jeanie for the answer to that question. How is this eighty thousand dollar reduction in grant funding going to impact us from your vantage point, Jeanie?
It will impact you. We had a meeting with the advisory committee, so we were, you know, we had a discussion as to whether or not we wanted to set priorities. Like, do we wanna focus on nutrition or programs for youth? I think ever since I've been engaged with the program, it's been kind of for both. So there's something for meals, for home delivered meals for the seniors. And there's tutorial programs for the underprivileged youth. I just advise them that the Spalding County's decision as to how they wanted to divide, you know, devy up these funds. Henry County, your neighbor, I think they receive funds and all of their funding, I believe, goes to the seniors. So it does senior meals and I believe transportation services. So that's them. Cobb County, they get more funding, of course, than Spalding. So they actually put out proposals where you can come in and apply to be a provider. And I'm not certain of the, certain about the areas where they actually provide the services. It's going to impact the way it is set up at this point, there will be no summer camp. So this year, we're trying to do the Fairmont Summer Camp, as well as the Tutorial Program at Salvation Army. But the way the budget is currently, that is not included in there, unless some additional funding comes. If additional funding comes by October or after October, you know, we can go back and revise the budget to accommodate that.
Split up, Jeanie.
How is it?
I, out of a hundred and six thousand, six hundred dollars.
You have a, you should have a budget in your packet.
Okay, we, I, I think we might have it inside of our thing. But, but what I add up is with fifteen percent, the number that you gave us, and then ten thousand dollars for additional help. That comes to forty thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, which leaves sixty five thousand dollars for three programs.
It's fifteen thousand nine twelve plus
And then ten thousand.
Six thousand. And this budget is six thousand.
So the, the person that you're gonna get the help is six thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so, so sixty nine thousand dollars, who's getting what? Is, 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 I mean, is that our decision? Or is it your recommendation? Steve, what is it? Can somebody put it up for us?
Yeah, we can pull that up. It's gonna be page twenty three in the, or at least that's what it's listed here.
In the agenda packet?
Yeah, it's the little colorful one.
It, it's showing for educational and cognitive development tutorial, other child education support, after school tutoring is twenty nine thousand two fifty. Health and social behavioral development, that's the, the big category. Senior nutrition program, home delivered meals is forty six thousand. Youth nutrition program is three thousand four hundred and eighteen. And then the grant administration is seven thousand nine fifty six. And then Easy Track and Smart Quest Data Management Services is eleven thousand five hundred, for a total of a hundred and six thousand eighty dollars.
So that's an additional amount, additional ten thousand out of that. You said ten thousand dollars for Easy Track, six for the help, fifteen thousand nine hundred and twelve for fifteen, the ten, fifteen percent charge. And then that is, that leaves the rest, so Salvation Army, twenty nine thousand.
There it is, right there on the screen.
Okay, behavioral, health and social behavioral development. That, that's forty six thousand for senior nutrition.
Correct.
So, so my question about senior nutrition is that, do they refi, receive funding from the Council on Aging? And, and I'm asking this question because to drop from providing thirty meals, congregate meals to people in homes, to fifteen meals is a significant drop. In my mind, I'd much rather see that money go to Meals on Wheels than to after school tutorial. And, and I say that because at some point, the Salvation Army needs to step up. I don't, I don't know what their budget is, but what, we said twenty nine?
As far as I know, I don't know what their, all of their budget is. This pays for the teachers' salaries, snacks and supplies for them for an entire year. So their program starts up like August and it goes through May.
And, and how, on, on an annual basis, how many kids on average is in that program?
They serve between thirty and forty kids.
Okay, so that's annually?
That's annually just for the after school tutorial. That's not for the, that's like, not for the summer camp program. They do not, as far as I know, they don't have funding like for the teacher's salary. So this is mainly what it covers, the teacher's salaries and fringe. They're like part-time employees of Spalding County. And then it covers some supplies, not a whole lot.
So, so I get it. That's, that's in your district, but, but I'm, you know, I'm, as far as the hierarchy, I'm not so concerned about Meals on Wheels because I'm old, but in terms of the impact. I, 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 I think that that money should be, be moved to them.
Priority to me, oh, it's the seniors.
Was that dreaming or was it several meetings ago that Kelly come in here and said that we had some new grant coming in that was gonna help?
We do at, at the boost grant at Fairmont. And I don't know that the Salvation Army has ever applied for it. But at some point, they need to start standing, standing their own program up. And I just, I, I, we, we were able to come in and say, hey, we're, we're actually providing thirty meals, congregate meals. I want kids to, to have stuff to do, but, but, you know, they got the school close by, they got the rec center close by. I don't know if Reagan is doing something after school. But if this is what we're dealing with now, I'd rather see the bulk of this money go to senior nutrition. Now, the other thing is with Backpack for Kids, which is youth nutrition. I, I, you know, hey, from where I'm standing, I, I'm just like, youth nutrition and senior nutrition. I, I'm just saying.
Alright, so what, what do you wanna take out? What do you wanna move?
I want to, I wanna know what amount of money it would take to keep thirty people. And if fifteen people takes forty nine thousand dollars, that's the whole thing. That's darn near the whole thing.
The meals are eleven thirty six per meals and we serve two hundred and fifty meals per year, per person.
Oh yeah, I don't know how to do that, man.
Okay.
Alright, so I've, I've got that. I will report back to the board and let you know what it would take to keep Meals on Wheels unaffected.
Yeah.
And I, and I guess the other question, and I should know this because I'm with the collaborative, I know we talked about, as Jeanie even talked about, about bidding out, putting out RFP for someone who wanted to administer Backpack for Kids. Could be a church, could be an individual, I, I don't know. But in a community like ours, while I, I think it's important to provide stimulus for, for children. I think it's also very important to provide people with healthy meals when they are not able to get it. And so if I have to figure, figure out getting tutored after school or making sure that a kid has something to eat on Saturday.
There's not much question.
Yeah, so, so yeah.
Alright, so work that and by, if we could do it by six o'clock, we'll change it by six o'clock. Jeanie, that's all okay with you, right?
As far, yeah, how, so, so you're, you wanting to put all of your funding into meals that's for seniors and youth? That's what you're trying?
Yeah, that, that's the request at the moment, but if you'll give me just a few minutes. I've sent word back to Kelly and asked her to give me the exact amount that it would take to keep the Meals on Wheels and the youth nutrition program fully funded as if we did this year.
Because she can tell us that the Council on Aging provides and what the entire cost is. Because I also think for senior nutrition, she gets hospital authority money, maybe fifty thousand dollars?
A little.
Okay, so, so yeah, just knowing what that is will be able to help us.
I think Three Rivers provide, like the aging, they provide some funding for, I know like congregate meals, I'm not sure, it might be some home delivered, but we I don't know that the Council on Aging still provides. I, I don't wanna misspeak about that.
Alright, no sweat. Steve's got that, he'll work that. If worse comes to worse, we'll skip, we'll do it, hold it the way it is. And then the next meeting, we'll figure it back, change it back around.
That's fine. I can send you the budget for, if you're trying to fund the thirty. I can send you the budget back for that because I worked that up into this cost and, and then provide it to them. If that's what you want to do, let me know so I can change all of this around because the application is due on the fifteenth. And they're getting pretty stickler about wanting things when they want it, so.
And also, I'd like to make sure if there's a timing issue, we may get some more money from them. If there's a timing issue, let's pay for the stuff we need now.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and then later, later on, we can pay for if we get more money out of the stuff, so. Alright, you got all that.
I do.
Thank you, Jeanie. We appreciate it. I know this wasn't easy news walking into us and we, but we appreciate the way you've given it to us.
When I see you again, you can hit me on the hand, because I know, I know, I, I don't got on your nerves.
No, I wouldn't do that.
I'll wait till nobody's looking. We love you, Jeanie.
Yes, we do. Alright, if we could, we'll ask the Sheriff, now that he's here, to come forth and discuss the request from the Sheriff's Department to surplus forty six vehicles rooftop light bars. Welcome Sheriff, it's always good to have you with us.
Yes, sir, thank you. So these are light bars that are, they're outdated, they've been parted out in some cases. The brackets don't match the cars that we have anymore. They're just generally outdated. And have been picked over and picked through and we figured the best thing to do is we can generate some money back into the general fund to go ahead and, and get rid of them and get it back in there instead of them just sitting on a pallet.
And what are, what is it, plastic?
Yes, ma'am, it's plastic. Most of them are plastic and aluminum. And they've, they're just, they're outdated. They've been used and used and used, swapped from car to car to car over the years and they're just going out.
Okay, so that we just wanna be surplus, okay.
Any other questions with that? Okay, alright, thank you Sheriff, we appreciate it. Next item. Discuss the memorandum from the Animal Care and Control Director requesting to increase adoption and vetting fees. Ms. Vicky Hennessy.
Hello.
Hi, Vicky.
How are you doing today?
Good.
Okay, um, so he's here, when he got the request to increase adoption and vetting fees, um, he also got the, um, actual vetting fee schedule. Does anyone have any questions about that and why we're actually?
Chris, can you bring up the schedule? Thank you.
We're waiting to see it. I, I didn't see it in a package, so that's why.
Didn't get it in the packet? Okay.
Not yet.
It's, so it looks like this, it's a fee schedule on the yellow highlighted at the bottom.
Somebody's gonna skip it up, pull it up.
All right, talk us, what's the general concept here?
Okay, well, the general concept is, as we know, over, um, we're here to hang, uh, ask for an increase in adoption fees and vetting fees for all services offered, um, with Spalding County Animal Care and Control. Over the past years, we've had seen significant rise in costs associated with providing quality care and medical services to the animals in our shelter. Um, kind of, I'm not gonna read over everything that's here, but, um, we're trying to do the very best we can, um, quality care for the least amount of money. Um, I did some statistics. Forty thousand vet offices in the United States were acquisitioned, um, and of those, a hundred and fifty, um, uh, for, uh, stop, excuse me. Forty thousand vets' offices were acquisition vet calls. The corporate, including Banfield and PetSmart, um, inflation supply and demand have taken its toll, and we need to unfortunately raise prices to combat. Vaccines tripled in prices. Uh, dewormer, flea preventatives, parasites, they all doubled in prices. Spay and neuter has skyrocketed. There's really no such thing as low-cost spay and neuter at this time, uh, vetting services in two thousand twenty-two, uh, in two thousand twenty-five, excuse me. So, um, what I have here is a animal control fee schedule, um, that was taken from the two thousand eighteen ordinance. So I believe that's the last time that someone had up those prices, and we have the current prices, asking prices, and then we have a couple of the vetting prices for some of the vendors that we use at this time, or vendors that we don't use that are, um, significantly higher. Um, at this point in time, we have had a thirty-five dollar adoption fee, um, for animals, and we're asking that we go back to also having a veterinarian fee because the veterinarian bills have outweighed what we have that's coming in. Also, to support this in an ordinance section twelve, uh, ten fifteen, denoted owners of impounded animals, B says that all cost of sterilization pursuant to this section shall be responsibility to the person acquiring such an animal. Now, the only thing I can say about that is it costs money, and we've got to be able to get the money from somewhere. And I've been asked to cut costs, um, this past year, uh, I can give you, we had a thousand and eighty-three animals that were intake. We adopted out seven hundred and three. We fixed four hundred and eighty animals at a hundred dollars, average a cat, two hundred dollars average a dog. So that's kind of where we went with the budgeting, and as we know, that was way over this year. Um, we still have several that we are working in the pipeline because most of the places will not do pediatric spay and neuter, so cats, puppies, kittens are in that pipeline, and we are working towards, um, in our budget meeting about getting some funding replaced for that. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, you know I do.
I know you do, ma'am.
So, so the adoption fee right now is thirty-five dollars?
Thirty-five dollars for fully vetted animal, yes, ma'am.
When someone comes in to adopt, and we have already altered the animal, we have vetted the animal, they don't, they are not paying for any portion of that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, so that's, that's pretty easy. So go back up this page.
Yes, ma'am.
And, I mean, clearly, the work needs to be in the adoption cost. Now, I, 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 if we were the vet, if we were Memorial Drive or South Side, yeah, I think the expectation is that, that if someone comes in, that they will get, adopt a dog, and it'll cost them two hundred dollars to get a spay or neuter, whatever. But we already know the demographics of this county. We, we begging people to take it. So I, I, I agree that because of inflation, we need to increase that, and we need to increase portions of whatever it is, shots, uh, some portion of, uh, whatever it is we're gonna charge, because I, this is never going to be a thing that makes money. Our goal right now is for you to spend, spend less. Oh, oh, uh, we all on the same page, spend less. So, I, I would, your suggestion for the adoption fee, to me, if the animal is altered, we have given him rabies shots, distemper, blah, 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 that cost should be in the adoption fee. I mean, I, 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 I mean, that's simple enough. If we're allowing people to benefit from what we have as spay and neuter program, and we talked about that based on income, you're having to show what your income is, then maybe out of that money, we can subtract from that entire cost for someone whose income is.
I've already been working on, uh, we talked about it in the budget meeting, about having a sliding scale for income-based financial assistance. Pet parents can complete a financial assistance request to qualify for possibly some of the special programs or grants that we're gonna be actually getting with, uh, Mr. Larry about, that would partially pay for spay and neuter of animals owned by families or individuals meeting certain criteria, and we'd have to go over that criteria and get that in line.
Um, I don't, I don't, I, I see boarding fees. So, so that's like, if you have a dog who didn't bite anybody, but we had to end up keeping him until you came back to get him.
Yes, ma'am.
It's twenty dollars a day, or twenty dollars a what?
Uh, the boarding fee for non-bite, or the boarding fee for, uh, bite aggressive, it's two different?
It, it doesn't matter. Is that per day or per?
It's per day. These are all per day, yes. If it says a boarding fee, it is per day. A transport fee or an impound fee, those are just one-time fees. An al- an altered permit is for a year, and a lot of people, what's happening is, um, my ACO officers are going out, they're knocking on doors, they're trying to get spay and neuter taken care of, and they're coming up and buying an altered permits because it's a hundred dollars when it's two hundred dollars to fix your animal. I would so prefer them to buy, to take two hundred dollars and fix their animal.
So, part of that ordinance said that if you haven't, if you want to request an unaltered dog, you have to either show that they are, uh, what do you call it, performance-ready?
A K C rated or they're different types, yes.
Right, or that they are, they are hunting dogs. You have to show that that's what they are. So you just can't come in and get an unaltered permit. There's some criteria for, if you're a breeder, you have to have a breeder's license. If you're a kennel, you have to have a kennel license. If you're a hunter, you have to have something showing that these, these animals are hunting dogs.
I don't have it in, in front of me, but I do know that, um, Judge Kavanaugh does give them the option to get a, an altered permit, and it doesn't have to specifically be those four.
Okay, Judge Kavanaugh can't do that. Okay, I, I, I'm just saying, if that is what's happening, we need to, to tell her.
So, uh, because what, I'm gonna be honest with you, when they come in, mine is, is we, with the pet population needs to go down. So if they come in and they're only wanting an unaltered permit because it's cheaper, then, then I'll try to work out a grant funding. Like, we got some with the Georgia Department Ag, and I say, based on their income, most of the time it is older elderly people, financially struggling people, and I work it out with them to go towards that grant. They paid the hundred dollars, which was what they were gonna pay anyway, and then re- the remainder of that.
But, but you don't have, when they leave there, the bill needs to be fixed. They don't need to be applying for a grant. If there's a grant and there's money for them, what I'm saying is at the end of the transaction, it should be closed. It should not be, I'm putting in for a grant and, and then maybe you'll get it later.
No, the ones, the ones that I'm specifically talking about is done right then and there. Um, Mr. Day just had three animals that were fixed. He paid three hundred dollars. The grant paid the remaining seventy, ninety, and thirty-five to get his animals fixed. We already have the grant in our budget.
So, so, right, I, I, we're, I think we're talking about different things.
I think we are too.
Okay. What I'm talking about is when someone comes in, first of all, when someone comes in and wants to get, to, to drop their dog off. I, a hundred dollars if you're altered and two hundred dollars if you're unaltered, but if they're unaltered and you're surrendering them, and it's literally gonna cost us two hundred dollars to get them fixed, we're giving you stuff. You shouldn't just be able to bring your dog and give it to us because you want to.
Cost neutral.
Right. I mean, I, it, you know, that means that anybody who's just tired of having a dog, or they wanna move to someplace else, can just come out and pay that, not judging you. I'm simply saying, we're looking at the money.
Let me explain to you, I'm get, this is based on the two thousand eighteen ordinance, which one, what I understand, is being reworked, working on it. We, we do not really take on our surrenders. That is in there because that was something that was in the actual, um, budget, or in the actual ordinance. Owner surrenders are based upon if we have space, which we normally do not. I had a lady call today who has five adult dogs. Two of those have twelve puppies between them, and then she's getting ready to move, and she can't afford them. We can't help her. We can't help her.
I mean, poor pa- po- poor planning.
Right.
On, on their part.
Right, exactly, but, but we don't, we don't take on our surrenders to the door.
So, so, I'm, are we gonna not do that after this?
That would be the recommendation, yes, ma'am.
Okay, but until that happens, and is this the list that we're working off of?
This is the list we're working off of. Uh, I, I do agree with you. I think an owner surrender fee, if it's altered, should be double that. It should be at two hundred, and, uh, the owner surrender fee for unaltered animals should be four hundred dollars per animal.
I mean, I, 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 if it costs us two hundred dollars to fix them, seventy-five dollars for shots, we're not even counting if, if you had to take them into the vet, or if they had a urinal tract infection, whatever.
Absolutely.
So, so if you want to give your dog away, and it, it, it's not a, a dangerous bite dog, uh, it can't walk, and it needs to get put down, or whatever, I don't know how, how you get to that place, but in general, you should pay for us to let you bring your dog back, and you should pay the cost that it cost us for us to do that.
That, that is correct, because if you, Chris, you scrolled down just a little bit, not a lot, but for an altered animal, um, you could bring that altered animal into our shelter under the owner surrender. If your dog is old and needs to be put down, you could spend a hundred dollars, and we're gonna, it's gonna cost us two hundred dollars to put the animal down under our current setup with, uh, with the veterinarians. Uh, so it's cheaper for somebody to just bring their animal in that's old and.
Let us pu- put it down.
That's correct. And, and I think that that's an issue for us. I think we need to be, uh, net neutral, um, no more, no less, but net neutral.
Correct, I agree.
And the, the, slide back up, Chris, i- if you look at the owner surrender, those figures should be doubled for the cost in that, those two line items. Uh, if you look now, the owner surrender fee for altered is a hundred dollars, uh, recommendation is a hundred. Uh, the owner surrender for unaltered is one hundred, and Vicky's recommendation is that we go to two hundred. I think that's double, or, or two times less than it should be. I think it should be two hundred and four hundred.
I have spoken to Judge Kavanaugh about that, but she has got, and y'all, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I don't know a lot about the system, but I have had conversations with her, and she's like, well, we could go up if it was a one-time fee, Vicky, but not a yearly fee. So.
What do you mean, uh, what, what?
Whenever she fi- when they're fined, whenever they go before the judge.
So what do you mean is a one-time fee? She's saying that, I, I don't know what the, what is the one-time fee for?
Yeah, 'cause a one-time fee, it would be a one-time fee for an owner surrender, so that, that's just a one-time fee.
Right, because you're not getting that dog back.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, but she just.
Unaltered permits is what, what we were discussing.
Okay, unaltered permit should only be given to people who meet the criteria of what we said in the ordinance, which you have to be either a licensed kennel, a licensed breeder, you have to bring documentation in showing that those animals are certified as hunting dogs, and that's what you use them for. Other than that, an unaltered fee should not be given to animals.
Absolutely helped write that ordinance, so I know when this is happening here, that it's not correct, but I don't know how to fix it on the judicial side.
The way that you fix it is, um, either by having me there with the ACO to present the ordinance, um, the, a certified copy of the ordinance, or the ACO needs to be making a better case citing the ordinance, um, chapter and verse.
Thanks, Catherine. All right, I, I, I don't think this is ready for us tonight. I don't think these numbers are exactly what we want.
I, I, you know what, I, you may have given this to us, I promise you, I haven't looked at it, so that's why I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm going through it. I'm, I agree with you. Let's just table this so we can all get a chance to, to look through it and make some notes on it, and other than just telling you stuff to do, have suggestions about how it can work.
We agree wholeheartedly, so would, um, can we table this until our next, our May, our first May meeting for the workshop so that we can have this discussion again?
Yes.
So the question is, I raised the question here because we have for two weeks, we are, may I be honest, completely out of funding for spay and neuter, so animals are having animals in the animal shelter, because we don't, we don't have the money to be able to spay and neuter. How do we handle, um, that problem? And also, if I can't charge these fees, do I still charge thirty-five dollars for animals that are, that are altered or unaltered?
Your current, your current ordinance indicates that, um, for those who are adopting animals, that they will pay the adoption fee plus the vetting fee for spay and neuter.
Yes.
So we are following, we should follow the ordinance and charge the thirty-five dollars for the adoption fee plus the amount of money that it costs for spay and neuter. So, what, whatever the ordinance states is what we should be doing.
Right now, until we get a new, yes, all right.
So, which is gonna, not gonna be thirty-five, I mean, it would be thirty-five dollars, but it would be some more.
That's correct.
Correct, yes. Okay, so just take this back to the drawing board.
Workshop back on, on, in first.
Give us a chance to really look at it.
Okay, and I, like I said, I understand, but we are giving away a lot of services. We're giving away fully-vetted animals, and I understand that we want the animals to get homes and that we want them, instead of being euthanized, but at what cost?
So, Vicky, you say animals are having puppies in the shelter.
We have one that's.
If they come in, is it a certain amount of time that they gotta be pregnant before you can terminate the pregnancy, or what?
So kitten season hits us, it always hits us two to three weeks before puppy season does. We have a mother in there right now, she's been there for half a second, but she's been also getting aligned to be vetted, which is another crisis. There are not a lot of veterinarians right now. Um, that's why in the house, um, bills, there's a lot of people that are licensed in different states that are able to come to Georgia and actually practice right now, and they're wanting to pay their vetting bills and, uh, schooling bills and stuff to try to get vets here. So, a sixty, sixty-six days, um, gestation. So, um, even if we don't have any money to do, that's why I put, was it five thousand dollars, sir, in there for spay and neuter, uh, was for things like that, for emergency spay and, spay boards and things like that when they come in, because sometimes.
But you still didn't answer my question.
Okay.
And I, girl, you almost told us what it was. Um, no, I, I, I wanna know how far along can a cat or a dog be before?
Some veterinarians will do it up to delivery, some veterinarians won't do it third trimester, so we have forty-five days for most. So that means they're not showing, and then they're li- they're beginning to show, and you've got to get it taken care of.
Right then. So, so I, I don't like the idea of us having dogs, having babies in the shelter.
Do not.
So, what I would like for you to do, you're out of money, um, that maybe we can look at what there is, an approximate number, or, because this means that nobody else is getting spay and neutered right now, correct?
Right, unless.
There needs to be, we need to not get one dog and end up with nine dogs as a result of that. So maybe we can look into, if we haven't spent it, our contingency funds to look for money for emergency.
Emergency.
Spay neuter, emergency spay neuter, because we're just shooting ourselves in the foot if we let one dog come in and we end up with ten. So, maybe we can find out if.
We'll take a look at that, yes, ma'am.
If there's, there's money and try to give you at least emergency funding.
Yes, ma'am.
Because you wanna keep those numbers down as much as possible. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Vicky. We know that, we, we're pulling you through the knothole, we understand.
Yes, thank you.
All right, item number six, discuss the request from Parks to move forward with CIE funds from two thousand twenty-six to replace the existing all-access play structure at Tyus Park, including consideration and approval for a sole-source contract for Bliss products and services in compliance with the Spalding County newly adopted purchase policy. Director Amber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, if you'd like, I could give you a brief, uh, update on this morning's weather incident?
Yes.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Office, the Fire Department, Griffin Electric, and Central Georgia EMC, as they all assisted our crews this morning. Um, we were able to respond very quickly and effectively. Uh, we had thirty incidences. Uh, currently, we are still at two. Uh, we had thirty incidences. Uh, currently, we are still at two roads that are closed. Avili Road and Vaughn School Road. Both of those are tied up with electrical primary lines. Both electric companies are unseen, so we hope to have those cleared by this evening.
Oh, total, how many households did we have without power initially?
I'm, I'm not familiar with that.
I'm sorry, I, I don't have that, uh, that number readily available.
Okay.
I thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Um, we're here this evening to ask for, uh, the request of the approved CIE money for the Wyoming Atias All Accessible Playground. Next slide. Uh, this playground was actually installed in two thousand and four, so it's twenty-one years old. It was installed with a grant that we received from Resurgence and Caterpillar. Uh, at the time, it was no cost to the county. Uh, currently, we have the unit shut down because of safety concerns. If you look at this picture here, the arrows are pointing to the safety surfacing, uh, that is bulging up, creating uh, traversing problems. Uh, we've had uh, some, some users actually trip on these areas, so we have it closed for safety. Next time, next slide, I'm sorry. Uh, I put this in here so you can see an overall picture. I also want you um, to review what the general layout is. Next slide. Uh, this is a copy of the currently approved CIE money, money. Uh, the turquoise there is actually this particular request. Um, I wanted to also point out the ones in yellow are upcoming uh, items that are approved. These are in there for same and similar type situations, safety concerns, or the playgrounds uh, no longer can be effectively maintained. The green one is actually an item that we just received eighty thousand dollars as a grant from the EPD. And I'd like to thank Larry Wallace, Greg Stansel and Randy King for securing those funds, so we're really able to save some money there. Next slide, please. So the new play structure, uh, this is the new play structure that's actually superimposed over the old layout. Uh, you'll be able to see, next slide. A very similar layout. Um, when we originally built and designed the structure, it is an all-inclusive, all-accessible play structure. We did something a little bit different as we went ahead and designed it as a family, all-inclusive play structure. That meaning, we just did not look at a youth that may have had accessibility needs. But we also looked at families that may have, the parents had accessibility needs. So if the parent had accessible issues, they would be able to play on the playground with their kids. Uh, and to bring them on there for family purposes. Uh, still there, uh, that is workable. We have the rubber walking trail and then we have play stations throughout the walking trail that are also all-accessible. Uh, next slide, please. So this design would continue with that. It's uh, as you can see, there's a combination of ramps. There's a combination of a multitude of different types of play accessories that are considered all-inclusive. Uh, one add here that would be um, pretty big is over there to the far right. That is actually a moving structure that when the wheelchair goes down there, you get the same rocking motion as a swing or a teeter totter. Uh, next slide, please. Here's some additional pictures of the replacement unit.
Where, where's the swing?
Excuse me?
Is it a swing?
No, it's, so that boat now, it's on the left-hand side, right-hand side there. When you enter that particular unit there with the wheelchair, it actually rocks back and forth, so that you have the same motion. Uh, this came out a couple of years ago and this is a exciting component to have. Um, the actual swings for wheelchairs are actually not recommended anymore. Uh, they have to be supervised by federal standards. Uh, they cannot be in the play, uh, in a park setting without supervision.
So, so the, the big round swing is at Fairmont. Isn't that an all?
Yes.
So why wouldn't we have that over here?
Uh, we don't have the space here for that. Uh, any swings, irregardless if they're all accessible or not, take up a lot of space in reference to the guidelines for the safety surfacing. So, in this particular layout, I'm trying to stay within, if you look at the left there, the existing ramp system. And then this particular area is actually graded into a hillside. So, we're trying to replace it with uh, as little other work as, as necessary.
I, you know, you, we're saying it's all accessible for adults, but I don't just see stuff on here that adults can do.
The adults, it's for access. So that if your child does not have accessibility issues and you do, you could go ahead and access, uh, uh, actually access a hundred percent of this play structure. Flip it and if you're a child, you have access to a hundred percent of the play structure. Uh, the ADA requirements is actually fifty percent and we're at a hundred percent. I could also explain a little bit more of the inclusion on the next slide, or the next two slides.
If I go to the park, if I wanna sit in the swing and I can walk, I can do that. But if I'm an adult and I want to swing, there's really nothing for me to do.
Not at this particular uh, park, but we do have those opportunities throughout the county. Yes, yes ma'am. Those opportunities are actually at Fairmont, uh, Orchard Hill, and I believe they'll be in the new design at Ambux as well. I could add it to this. Absolutely.
I, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at it. We, we, we say that we want it to be all accessible. But I misunderstood because all accessible just means your parents can take you up there. I felt like the all accessible should mean that anybody, children, teenagers, adults who are.
They, they absolutely can. This is designed for all accessibility issues. That was just something that's unique. So most folks, when they design all accessible play structures, they're just thinking of the child. This originally, when we built it in two thousand and four, because of a resurgence grant, we did something completely different that hadn't been done before. We looked at the entire family. That's why that this is positioned where the walking trail is with rubber, with all accessibility and the all-accessible stations. So this is um, something above and beyond that most designs go to.
Um, okay, I, I'm, I'm, I know what you're asking of, but did we ever think about asking Caterpillar or Hoshizaki or someone in the industrial park to, to do what Resurgence did? And to, to sponsor, sponsor this all-accessible playground?
So this particular playground is in the approved CIE program.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying the same way that Resurgence paid for it and we put it in the last time, talk to me.
No ma'am, we did not uh, approach any of the companies out in the industrial park to support and help us uh, grant funds in addition to the CIE for this particular uh, park. Uh, that is something that we should be considering for the next three. Um, Chris, could you go back up to the CIE list?
A- and I say that because I don't know why the hospital authority would not be.
Don't disagree. The, the request that we.
For providing all-accessible.
You're, you're exactly right. The request that we made for the hospital authority for this past year was uh, in support of Mills on Wheels. Um, but I, I agree with you. I think there's an opportunity for us. Moving past this one, since this is uh, this playground has actually been closed for safety purposes. Uh, there's an opportunity for us to go back to the uh, the companies at uh, Lakeside Green Valley. Go back, Chris. Uh, and, and request their support for the other five parks that you've got listed there outside of the, the two that are in green and blue.
And can't we put a subtle thing out there that's.
Absolutely. Or sponsored by.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would one hundred percent agree with that. And if you allow me to get to the national demonstration site information, I think that I could one hundred percent lean into being able to ask for those grants on the next one. I, I think we find something very exciting about this. Um, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this um, actual, uh, this particular site here, uh, Playcore, which owns five of the major playground companies throughout the world, actually has developed the seven principles of inclusive play. Uh, you'll see those listed here. They've developed these with the University of North Carolina. Um, and also, you may be familiar with the scientist Temple Grandin. Uh, she is a very famous scientist who actually has autism.
Yes.
Uh, she has actually been working with Playcore for the last five or six years. Specifically developing play structures that address not only autism, but all of the inclusion play. Uh, you have to meet these seven criterias to be a national demonstration site. Next slide, please. This was designed specifically to be a national demonstration site. What that means is we'll be addressing all seven criterias. We will also then be registered as a national site, which means that we will start collecting data on this particular site. There'll be a QR code that's there at the facility. All users will be able then to enter surveys based on what they came there for. Uh, are we meeting the needs of the particular child or user? Um, are we exceeding them? Are we not doing a good job? Do you see that we need to be doing other um, needs? These are all gonna be going directly to Playcore. We will then start getting monthly reports based on these surveys on end users that will help us then designate what the need is for the next all-inclusive play structure. Uh, as you can imagine, there's literally hundreds of ways that we could do this. So, with this data, we'll have the analytics then to approach any major corporation and say this is what the particular need is in our community and we could address that on the next facility. I think that would be really exciting to do that and we'll have the support of Playcore. Next slide. Is, uh, before we go to the cost part, I guess I would need to ask, do you have any other questions? Next slide. So, we do have the new purchasing policy. Uh, I think you're one ahead of me. There you go. We do have the new purchasing depart- uh, policy. So over the last three weeks, we've been working directly with Larry Wallace so that we can comply with all um, policies that are within uh, your, well, recent policy. Um, this particular uh, structure here, as you can see, our quote is for two hundred and fifty-nine, actually two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We had three hundred and fifty actually in the budget. Uh, we did utilize what we call a PCA discount. So, what that means is under the policy, we needed to take a look at either bidding this or apply for a sole source uh, documentation. Uh, we have asked for sole source because this is a park and play structure. Um, we have, we have a thirty-year relationship with Bliss Products. We have twelve, actually eleven other structures from this particular manufacturer. Why this is important is, is that um, parts uh, don't transfer over from different manufacturers. Uh, so when you're in a need for an emergency part and/or the particular way to repair that particular structure, uh, it's always a very good process and policy to have, be very familiar with that. So since we already have eleven structures, uh, we want to continue utilizing uh, park and play as our manufacturer. This will also become very important in the next couple of years because our federal guidelines uh, for playground safety, maintenance, um, and the way that they're built are actually changing rapidly. So you're gonna see a lot of changes in this industry and our requirements of Spalding County to be in the playground business. So this will make this uh, much easier for us to maintain. If you go to the next slide. So we had to go through an extensive process. Uh, currently, this is on the Georgia procurement, asking for any objections to the sole source. This will expire in a few days, April eleventh. Uh, we've had this on there for several weeks. Next slide. Uh, this is where we started looking into the policy and we're following the particulars that you have set uh, as guidelines. We do have the letter of sole source from Play and Park indicating that this is the distributor for eleven states of this particular uh, equipment. Uh, and then this on the right-hand side is the actual policy statement taken from the Spalding County procurement policy. Next slide. These are the particular steps and questions we had to specifically answer and then have certified by the county manager and the finance director, deputy county manager, uh, and myself and Larry Wallace assisted us through this process. Next slide. This is the certification from the federal government that uh, Bliss Products and Services and Playcore are actually in good standing for all federal purchasing policies. Uh, we also have utilized the PCA contract, which is also acceptable by the federal government uh, as a purchasing uh, product, um, cooperation, actually agreement. It's similar to like when we uh, purchase off a state contract. Uh, this is approved by the federal government so that we can use that as a sole source as well. So, the request here is to proceed with the CIE item and then also to approve the sole source recommendation. Based on all current approved policies and the approved budget of the CIE.
Steve, anything in this that uh, I'm not seeing? This is all good work by their, to get this all rolling and done properly.
Yes, sir. Um, the budgeted amount that we have been running in our CIE for the past uh, two and a half years has indicated that the budget was three hundred and fifty thousand. And through the work that the team has done in support of this particular CIE project, we're coming in at two seventy-five. So, um, a concern, about seventy-five thousand dollars less than what was initially thought that we would need.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, TJ, walking out unskate.
I'm not done yet. I got two more.
Well, that, that one's done.
And I, I, I won't be here this evening, so any questions, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, discussing requests from Public Works to move forward with an emergency repair on the cross drain on Vaughn Road, Vaughn School Road at the reservoir.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, this is located on Vaughn School Road. It's a cross drain that runs under Vaughn School Road. This is approximately quarter mile east of the fire station. Next slide. We discovered this a few weeks ago. Uh, these, I will have to admit, these pictures are a little bit difficult because a lot of this is actually underground. Uh, this is a large sixty-inch cross drain, which is actually full of water right now. On the one side, on the south side of this road is the Griffin Reservoir. On the north side is a stream slash small pond that actually feeds into it. You'll see these pictures on the right-hand side. What has happened is a couple of feet from where it actually enters, we have a band that is holding two pieces together that has come apart. So if you look in the lower right-hand picture, you're gonna see that that gap right there is the gap between the pipe that goes under the road and the gap that goes into the swampy area. It's actually, has come apart. Uh, what this means is, is that water is actually flowing underneath uh, this cross drain. We are unfamiliar with what rate or how much is actually eroded under there. We also have confirmed that this pipe is actually non-existent on the bottom of it, so it has rusted away. Uh, what's very concerning about this is, is that we're unable to assess all of the damage. We do know that there is water running under there and washing away around this pipe, uh, which means, next slide, please. If uh, this pipe was to uh, erode completely, the road would go ahead and wash away. We, if you'll see there in both of these pictures to the left, you're gonna see where we've indicated where the fire station is. I have looked at response times to get to the other side. If the pipe is not there, uh, we're eight minutes. If you use West Macintosh, then we're six minutes. If you have to go back to ninety-two highway. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, we do have an emergency situation. Uh, once again, we are learning a lot about the new purchasing policy. So we have referred back to the purchasing policy. Uh, normal purchases over fifty thousand dollars, we would go through the bid process. Uh, this particular situation here, we estimate would take about ten weeks. Uh, if anytime during that process we had failure, uh, would severely eliminate and cut off the access to the fire station to the residents on the um, east side of the pipe. If you refer to the emergency procurement that's inside of our current policy. If you refer to the emergency procurement that's inside of our current policy, uh, we do not require the same bid process. In fact, we can declare it an emergency. We could select a vendor and we can move forward immediately. No further steps are needed underneath the policy. Uh, it's our recommendation that we do declare this an emergency, and if you look on the bottom, we'd like to go ahead and actually obtain three quotes from three different vendors, uh, so that we can begin this process immediately. Uh, not select a single, uh, vendor, but also look at the three, three quotes. Um, if you, next slide, please. Uh, this is the procurement policy itself. This is a copy of it directly from the policy. Um, what we have done is, is we've secured those three prices. We utilize, uh, what we thought would be a preferred vendor. Uh, their bid was actually ninety-two thousand dollars. We have a second price that was one twenty, but I found the vendor locally, McRoy, that would be able to do this job for the mid thirties. So I could immediately save sixty thousand dollars if this is declared an emergency and we can address this immediately.
Well done on that part. So last, first one was seventy-five thousand, now we're down to sixty.
First one was ninety-two. So now I'm down to thirty-five, and the third one was one twenty.
No, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Yeah, first was seventy-five thousand in savings, and now I'm at another sixty thousand in savings.
Okay, any questions on this from anybody? I think the three, him taking the extra step to be able to do three, uh, quotes, absolutely great on his part. So, well done. Okay. We're going to vote on these, remember. Okay.
But, but, but don't we have to have more information in this in order to vote? Because what's on the agenda is discuss the request. There's nothing on number seven that tells us to do an action.
Correct. He, he, um, TJ needs to provide us with the actual contract for the thirty thousand so you can vote on it, but we do need to move forward. Uh, now that we are down at thirty thousand, it is within my purview of signing that particular item off, so we can move forward.
So there's no, we don't.
There's no action at this point.
All right, that's fine. So I don't even know why we still got this on here.
You, you shouldn't have it on the agenda for this evening. At thirty thousand, it's below my threshold, so I can sign off on this.
All right.
At the time, I thought we were looking at ninety-two thousand.
That's correct. At the time, we were at ninety.
All right, item number eight. Discuss designating the paving of Pine View Road as a two thousand and twenty-one dirt road improvement project.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, next slide, please. In the twenty-twenty-one T-SLOSS, there was a line item that indicated two-point-five million was designated, uh, for dirt road improvements. Next slide, please. In twenty-twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners instructed Public Works to secure an estimate to pave Pine View Road between Dobbin's Mill and the paved portion of Pine View Road. Uh, if you remember, this particular road actually already has the eighty-foot right-of-way acquired. So the county owns the right-of-way. Uh, this is also a main north-south connector road, um, that links the two sides of the county. Uh, and it's a small, less than one-mile portion between the, the Dobbin's Mill and the currently paved portion of, um, Pine View. This estimate was also including the removal of a dangerous hill, uh, where you have, uh, no sight distance. Next slide, please. This is an example of one of the major concerns about this road is that there is no sight distance. So we went out last week and actually took some pictures. You can see here from seventy-five and fifty feet, on the other side of that hill is a truck. And you cannot see it as you're approaching that hillside. Next slide. If you go southbound, we have the exact same instance there. Uh, you actually get to the top of this hill before you even see any oncoming traffic. You could also see that this is, uh, a very typical dirt road for us. That's essentially one lane. So when you come over the hill, you have no time to react. Next slide, please. We also have several other hazards on this road. Uh, we have a major creek crossing, uh, that's in an extreme wet area. Uh, this particular cross drain and creek crossing has, uh, become, uh, more of a failure, uh, than actually operates in the manner that it should. Uh, we do have the hill that you saw there. Uh, we have, uh, no clearance zones or adequate shoulders on this road. And then we have three major pipelines that come under this road. One is Colonial Pipeline with an, an inactive Atlantic Gaslight, um, line. Atlantic Gaslight, even though that that's been inactive for decades, uh, they will not declare it inactive. Uh, so I have to treat that line as an active line. And then we do have an active Atlantic Gas line in addition to the other two. So the standards of coming over those lines, uh, we're having to actually increase the cover. Uh, we're having to do some special work related to those lines because they are active. Um, they have been very, um, they've participated in the design. Both of these companies have, uh, and have been active in that engineering. It's also going to require that while we're working into those areas, that they're present as well. Next slide, please. So here are the estimates, or the estimate that we have to complete this project, to pave it. Uh, it's approximately two-point-seven million dollars. This does not include the acquiring of construction right-of-ways. So we own all of the right-of-way, however, because of the blasting and a lot of the grading work that needs to be done because of the blasting, because of the creek crossing, um, and utility movement, we are going to have to, uh, achieve twenty-one temporary construction easements. So there's still the cost of acquiring those. Um, so I would like to request that this estimate would actually be at three million dollars to give us appropriate room for that and any other additional contingency other than the ten percent that's in this current estimate. Um, this is a cost estimate, so this would still go out for full bid, full construction bid, and we would obtain construction bids um, through our purchasing policy. Next slide, please. What I would like to do is first, our request is, is to actually, uh, have this designated as one of the projects of the two-tiered dirt road improvement, um, and establish it as one of the twenty-twenty-one T-SLOSS projects for dirt, for dirt roads. Next slide, please. So this allows us for some opportunity that the state of Georgia has allotted us. Uh, as you remember, last year, we had local road assistance, uh, funds allowed it by the state of Georgia and the governor's office. In addition to our LeMig, we utilized that last year to, um, actually parlay support from Henry County and the city of Griffin. Uh, we kind of doubled our value there in those particular projects. This year, I would like to ask that that one-point-one million dollars actually be assigned to this particular project. If you see the exact amount there, one million, one sixty-nine, one hundred ninety-six dollars and seventeen cents, that would remain, uh, give us a remainder of one-point-eight million. Uh, if we deduct that from the two-point-five million that's allowed it in the T-SLOSS funds, I would still have six-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand available for additional dirt road improvements under this current T-SLOSS. Uh, I would like to ask that we consider this and approve this this evening so that we can move forward with this project, um, as soon as possible.
TJ, all of the, um, all of the engineering has been completed and we're ready to put this out for construction bid. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, any comments, questions?
Uh, is this still part of our transportation plan?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, it is part of the transportation plan, has been part of the transportation for many decades. I think in every update, this has been included. Yes, ma'am.
And, and back to your point, uh, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, this is a, thi- this we see as a wonderful opportunity for us to do connectivity along, um, Pine View Road to connect three sixty-two and Highway sixteen. Um, with the amount of traffic that we have in and around that area, an additional collector or connector road would be, uh, very beneficial for our community. And, and just kudos to you for leading the charge on that particular, um, road.
All right, anything else anybody needs before voting tonight? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number ten. Discuss the proposal for a new position in the administration department, records retention administrator to be included in the FY twenty-twenty-six budget. Ms. Erica Dai.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Next slide, please. I don't know if any of you guys have actually noticed that we actually have a brand-new records retention room that is located in the Solomon East Building. It is approximately eighty-four feet by twenty-three feet. And there is also thirty racks for storage for all of our records within the whole entire county. And there's also additional space for sixteen more racks that's needed. If you look on the back side of the left, on the left-hand side of the picture, you'll notice where there's additional area for that. I'm here this evening to request the need for a records retention administrator for our brand-new room. In an era where there is information is power, the proper management and preservation of records are paramount to the efficiency and the transparency of our local government. A records retention administrator will ensure that all documents, from vital public records to internal communications, are systematically organized, securely stored, and readily accessible. This role is essential for several reasons. Next slide, please. For compliance and accountability. With ever-evolving regulations and legal requirements, having a dedicated professional to oversee records retention ensures that Spalding County will remain compliant with state and federal laws. This accountability fosters trust and confidence among our citizens. Efficiency and productivity. Proper records management streamlines operations, reducing the time and resources spent on locating and retrieving documents. This efficiency translates into better serving, service delivery, and more efficient governance. Historical preservation. Our records are testament to the rich history and the progress of Spalding County. A records retention administrator will safeguard these documents, preserving our heritage for future generations. And lastly, risk management. In the event of emergencies or legal disputes, having well-maintained documents can be cru- crucial. This role will mitigate risk by ensuring that all necessary documentation is intact and accessible when needed. Last slide, please. In summary, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners should consider adding this position for records retention administrator to re- address several critical needs. Centralized oversight, compliance with law, improved efficiency, risk management, and cost savings. By addressing these needs, the records retention administrator will play a vital role in enhancing the efficiency, compliance, and security of Spalding County's new record management system. Thank you, and I would be happy to try and answer any of your questions you may have.
Now, uh, I think three of us were there when we discussed this on Thursday night. So, uh, Ryan, if you, I think, I don't know if you were there or not. What have you, anyway, uh, we've already discussed all of this. It's in the budget that we've already got set up, so this isn't anything new to us.
So, so my question is, and I, I know that, that we have somebody that we hire for this, and I know that this, what are going to be, this is a different position, what are the job requirements for this? What are the qualifications?
Did, did you bring the?
I did not bring the job description.
We, we do have a job description and, um, we have worked very diligently on that job description, and we can provide you with a copy of that.
Okay. All right, anything else on this? All right.
What was that one? So what was salary going to be?
The salary will be starting at forty-five thousand. And it would be included in the administration department budget for FY twenty-six. We would hope to have the department up and running, or the room up and running, uh, July one.
So are you also requesting a deputy director for finance in your budget this year, too?
That's a different department. It would be in the finance department.
Okay, not under administration.
No, ma'am.
Okay, item number eleven. Discuss the resolution to adopt a moratorium on the acceptance of applications to rezone property to Village Node District. Uh, as I remember in our, uh, session on, uh, zoning, uh, we made a motion and, uh, passed to rezone, to, uh, um, put a moratorium on, uh, Village Node for ninety days to.
Does it start already? Does it start after we vote for the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, yeah. So, so that's what the resolution is.
Yes, ma'am.
So all we're, tonight, we'll vote to pass that, so, so that ninety days. Now, it's just on very specific. I want to make sure. We're just talking about this little bit. We're not talking about all other actions that are coming in. Other actions are still moving through.
Are, are we, are we bound by ninety days? Is that like some drop-dead rule?
Is that the maximum?
That's, that's the extent to which you could, we could, we could call for moratorium?
Um, it's not the maximum, no.
One hundred and eighty days is the maximum under the current planning, um, law, as I understand it.
Because I just don't feel like we're going to be really making any motion, uh, any movement on figuring out what to do with this in ninety days.
As you know, you can extend it at a later date.
That is correct.
Uh, you know, I'm just saying, we already know. Maybe in six months, we'll have something, but ninety days for sure we won't.
We get the first one passed, then, take a look. We'll have, uh,
Get it in place.
Have David come back and talk to us about it at that time. All right?
Do we have a closed session?
We do not.
All right, uh, any other comments or questions for the work session? All right, we have, uh, an hour to go before the next session.
Um, that Roma training. Can we get that link sent to us? Won't let us open it and?
Yes, I, I will get with, uh, with Ms. Brantley in the morning and have that link reset.
All right, that'll work.
It's pretty painless. It's, it really is pretty painless to go through, real and truly.
That's why I'm going to go ahead and do it.
And, uh, uh, you just print off and send in the thing. Uh, if there's no test or anything else on the end of it, or you can't pass it to you, no, you just do the other, all right?
They just want us to do it.
Correct. All right, do I have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All those in favors, please signify by raise your hand. We're adjourned.